I saw Sharon last week, Saint Joe's.
Oh, yeah.
She was preschool one day.
Yep, yep, she was.
Ready, Julie?
Track her for.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Five o'clock, we'll call the school board workshop to order. Nope, no pledge for the workshop.
Okay.
Uh, first item on the agenda, Anna Anderson and Jessica Bobrowski, Ojibwe education program.
Ms. Chair, I wonder if we might just go around and get to everyone because I don't know everyone.
Sure. Why don't we start with Jessica?
I'm an Indian, I'm a Native American, I would be Jessica Bobrowski, and I am the program coordinator for the Nishonabiki Kikimawin program for eight years.
Thank you.
I am Anna Anderson, I am a parent committee member, I have a seventh reader.
David Marty, school board clerk.
Mark Schroeder, school board.
Matt Gro, superintendent.
Dave Cowan, school board.
Tom Best, school board.
Megan Perrington, uh, parent committee, and I have two kids, eleventh grade and sixth grade.
Candice Henderson.
Erica Bobrowski, middle school student, I have a kid.
I'm parent, I'm parent.
Thank you. Yep.
So we, I have kind of like a more like formal slideshow, I guess you could say, just some slides, some information. And then I thought we could just kind of have a conversation, like that's why we invited some of the parent committee here, just to hear their voices and lift that up to you and their experiences here at the school. Jessica, if there's anything you want to add as I'm saying stuff, feel free to just jump in. Um, so last April, um, we did a two-day, um, like session as a team and kind of identified some strategic directions for our programming. Um, out of those, kind of like getting us towards our vision are these four themes. So most of the work that, uh, we're looking at completing over the next couple of years and kind of really, um, targeting, um, our, our daily tasks to involve providing and sharing information to stakeholders, empowering and catalyzing cultural leadership and awareness, enhancing and centering team priorities, and expanding program curriculum. Uh, and as a result of our actions, um, what we kind of want to see in place in three to five years is responsible district collaboration, inclusive cultural events, um, really focusing on that language revitalization. Last year when we surveyed our parents', um, language and cultural education were, were the top things that were most important to our families that completed the assessment. Um, having a culturally fluent district, nurturing and healing spaces, and nurturing and educating our staff. Uh, you know, through those two days, it was really clear, um, and cool to see just how much passion there was for our program from the advocates, the staff, and just how, um, into and they are with like the needs of the students and families within each of our buildings. Um, the cool thing about a lot of this is these aren't just like our vision, like it's not just our program lifting up these things, but it's really like kind of the district coming alongside of us to do this. Um, if you look at, for example, the culturally fluent district, that's something that the strategy team is focusing on right now. Um, and then, you know, some of the cultural events we've seen, um, with the, um, like the literacy avenue, like last year, like that Nes Pierce storyteller came alongside, like Carol Cobb had, um, had that, looking at some of those other types of things. And with the, um, nurturing and healing spaces, just really thinking about how, um, you know, we really see our rooms and our program as like pebbles of healing for students and families about the experiences they've had in the past. And so they just really trying to be a space that is safe and can advocate for all, um, of our program students. And we do have a full report, so if you would like to see that, I'd be happy to email it to you. Um, here's our program staff this year. Uh, we were really excited to be able to have someone part-time in Big Fork this year, that's definitely been a goal. So someone that's up there specifically for Big Fork, um, and then at each of the buildings in the district. Our program funding, so state funding, and so this is kind of based off of our 2025 count, two hundred and thirty-one, hundred thousand dollars, federal funding, a hundred and fifteen. And then the JOM dollars, um, is to be determined kind of forthcoming.
And so when we talk about funding for Indian education within our district, we also look at the different supplemental income that, not income, budget monies that are focused over to us. So our middle school advocate is covered under the Achievement and Integration Grant and focuses on different goals through achievement and integration. When we did our strategic planning, we looked at the school district strategic plan, we looked at the goals of A and I, and then the goals of Indian education, to see how we can align those. And so our middle school position is staffed by A and I, and we get thirty-five percent of special education fund. That special education funding is placed towards Indian education to help look at the over-representation of Native American students in special education. Rapids does very, very well with our numbers and not having an extreme overpopulation. Our program comes in and we establish cultural observations. So anytime a student is referred for special education observations, one of our advocates come in with a cultural lens and actually do the observations for that student. And?
Can I ask a question? They do exactly, or they, they just participate?
Participate, yep. And so all of our advocates are currently trained in cultural observation through the Dream Catcher Program, through Minnesota Department of Education.
JOM?
Johnson O'Malley. So it's a specific pot of funds that is kind of like a direct reimbursement, um, for student needs.
State funding?
It's federal.
Federal?
But it doesn't get run through the district, it goes through, it goes through like an education department.
Thank you.
It's fiscal, it's fiscal agent.
So just to piggyback on what Jessica was saying and the importance of that culture piece, there was, you know, one of the things they've observed over time, there, there, especially with American Indian kids, there are American Indian kids being identified for special education when the, the, uh, what was being observed is really a function of their culture, not of their, and so that's what the, why that's really important.
That's why you have an advocate or a, a team on it.
So, um, our program eligibility, like this is for enrolled students, any student who is a direct member of a federally recognized tribe or a descendant. So son, daughter, child, grandchild, or great-grandchild, a federal member or federally recognized tribe. But we really try to like include as many students as we can in our programming. Uh, but these are our, like the students that are our main focus, um, and that we like collect data on, I guess you can say, or like work. Um, we really focus on family engagement, uh, we have a lot of family nights throughout the, uh, throughout the year, please join us. If you see something, please come. Uh, we encourage student, staff, community members to come in and see what we're, what we're doing. Um, we do have, uh, an American Indian parent advisory committee, um, that helps guide our grant applications and like what we do in our work, we get their feedback on, um, what would they like to see? How, um, how can we better support our students and families in the school system? And they kind of give us that input to, um, help write our grant, and there's some checks and balances with that. We complete a family needs assessment survey every year to make sure that family voices, even if they're not on the parent committee, are heard. Um, let me step in on that one.
So that's actually a state mandate and a JOM mandate that we, that each program completes a family assessment survey to be sure that all the programs are collaborating with the community.
How, how is that survey done? Is it face-to-face, or is it written?
We do it a multitude of ways.
Okay, okay.
The best way we can get the most numbers, we do, I think last year we did a combination of like a Google survey, but then also conversations and just kind of trying to get.
Family fun nights.
Yeah.
Um, really the advocates are homeschool liaisons. And so they're really that connecting point for families, um, to the school. So, I mean, there's a lot of times where, um, if something's going on with the family, they're reaching out to the advocate first. They're the ones that probably know what's going on with the student or the family. They're the ones that the family feels trust with. And so it's just such a, a bridging point to have that school-community partnership kind of live in, in the advocates lab. And they're really involved in whatever that means for family engagement or whatever that's needed. Um, and then just like the full service, services, like, you know, I mean, if a kid, if an advocate is seeing that a kid needs classes or to see the nurse, or there's something else going on, or they need food, or whatever it is, I mean, they're really just that voice for students. Um, and then otherwise, you know, that, that trusting voice so that they're not getting overlooked. Uh, we have a lot of different partnerships, um, through the program. As you can see here, I mean, lots of partners. I'd say, um, you know, our biggest thing is just trying to make sure that whatever partnership that we're having aligns with our strategic directions and making sure that we're really being focused on what we want to be doing.
And these partnerships right here are very longstanding.
And we were really selective when picking partnerships as the Indian education program grew tremendously within eight years. And so we were very selective within the community entities of who we wanted to partner with to be sure that they were doing the best for the community or students and our families in the area. If you haven't been to the children's museum, you should go and check out the, um, the exhibit that Jessica and Erica worked on very hard, it's beautiful. Like if you like, you can go in and you can see like the Ojibwe constellations, you can like, the lights get turned off, there's like a den. Even just say like, hey, I gotta go in and see, it's really awesome. Um, so just some data, just to kind of say like, where are we at? So this is like from the North Star Academic Achievement Report that MTE has, like on the report card. Um, and it basically says like, are students performing at grade level? That's the question that this, this chart answers, um, so you can see kind of where it is. So I put the, the state, um, percentage, American Indian students at the state level, the three-eighteen achievement level, and then the American Indian students at three-eighteen. So even though like there's some definite bright spots of like, you know, compared to, you know, American Indian students in other districts, um, you know, we are doing something that supports our students. However, like there's still a large gap there. And so, um, you know, that's something that we want to continue to keep an eye on and think collaboratively about as we're moving forward. Uh, you'll see the same for reading. Um, consistent attendance, are students attended consistently, I think was the question. Um, you can see that, um, you know, our students are coming to school more than their counterparts, almost the same as everyone else in the district. There is still some room for growth. Obviously, we'd love to see kids here ninety-five percent of the time, or.
So how, how has that been historically? Do you have any, I mean, you, you've said in the last eight years, there's been great improvement, right? Um, is, has that stat really improved with, with programs, or?
So let's go back to, let's go back to our academics. Grand Rapids is one of the school districts in Minnesota that the achievement gap hasn't widened. During COVID, we were one of the only schools in the district that our Native American students didn't see further.
Yep. Um, we also look at our attendance rates, we're doing some collaboration with Ross Resources in order to bring in that cultural piece to attendance, and we are seeing some movement, still some, we need some growth there. But overall, when we look at even the statewide and looking at other districts around us, they sit at a fifty-three percent for their students. So our students are getting here, coming to school. It would be interesting to kind of run the trend of that, I don't know.
Curious.
So it has.
Programs really helped out, or?
Great question. Um, so just looking at our graduation rates, and I think this is really just like a testament to like how our program works. If you look, um, you know, our graduation rate is, last year was, or first school year twenty-twenty-four, was ninety-seven point one percent. So that's higher than the district average and of course the state average. And so just something really to celebrate, and I think it just speaks to the staff that are in the buildings, working with the students and how much trust, um, and work collaboratively they do with students and families. And of course, the students showing up to do what they need to do too.
Uh, what does, is the continuing further education, is that what that?
Um, no, continuing means they didn't graduate in four years, so like maybe they had to go, um, like beyond to like an ALC or doing something like that. And then, yeah, the one and none, I'm not sure. But, um, this is the second year in a row we've seen that, that really high average. So, um, our goal in our grant is a hundred percent at some point, but hopefully we get there, right? I mean, that's definitely, that's our hope all around, but excited.
I have a quick question. So the attendance is probably pretty strongly correlated to graduation rate, right? Can you identify anything specifically that you guys have been working on that is contributing really highly to the attendance going up? Anything specific that you would, can call out that, you know, since you went to X, it's?
I think it's really just building that, um, that relationship with the student and actually letting them know that we do care and we do, just building that strong bond with the student.
So they have a reason to go to school?
And the family. And then if they're struggling with, um, how to get to school, we figure out how to help them to get.
I can speak to that also, I have a twenty-twenty-four grad, and she would not have graduated without Ella at the high school, seriously. She, that's the only reason she wanted to go some days, so.
I, I think to, you know, the, if you, if you go back to the slide, you don't need to go back to it, but, or, or maybe if you rewind, you know, the clock ten years, the presence, um, our, our, we didn't have a presence in every school. Um, back to, you know, the, the relationship piece, we didn't have a presence in every school. We didn't have advocates in every school, getting to know kids that way, parents that way. And I think that matters a lot to have somebody in your building, um, that can relate to, relate to you.
And I think just that, like, ongoing, um, evolution of the curriculum too throughout the program and like including the language, helping students feel seen and heard and know that like they matter and they're important in the buildings is really critical too. So just kind of a, a snapshot at elementary programming and kind of like just some rough numbers as the day I pulled this, um, to kind of give you an idea of how many students are at each, each, each building. Students at the elementary level are doing cultural groups. Jessica, you want to talk a little bit about the curriculum update?
So on the side, I also write curriculum, and I look at our state standards, and I have some awesome people that I work with. So what I, what I had and did was, we were working out the seven grandfather teachings, and that's the signage you see in the schools, that's what our programming goes on. And so what we did to incorporate, we indigenized our curriculum more this year, and we practice one grandfather teaching each month. So we now have benchmarks for our students in our Indian education program. K-two will learn numbers one through eight in Ojibwe, they'll learn the grand, seven grandfather teaching animals, the month. We do a cultural activity that's related, not just a craft, we don't do crafts, we do things that are learning lessons in our culture. Then we also take real-life experiences with them. So like this past month, it was the buffalo. So we actually had students go out and help scrape a buffalo hide, and we do these in collaboration with like the Leech Lake Tribal College. So they're out there doing this kind of work, and so those real-life pictures are actually in the curriculum that the students are learning about. And so they do weather in Ojibwe, they do their numbers, they do, they can have greetings, how are you doing? And the kids will respond. And our advocates have a very short time to do this in, like literally about fifteen minutes to go through all of these. So we're just working our curriculum through the seven grandfather teachings, it's created by us. And you can't just go someplace and order curriculum. You can't go someplace and order these awesome signage, and that's, you have to create it all, and that's what we've been working on.
I'd say just to kind of talk about that, the timing barrier, and say, that's kind of the thing that we run into almost, is just like, how do we get time with kids? I mean, like with the requirements, the read acts, and like kind of the intervention schedule and the, whatever else that kid needs for their academics, it kind of, um, at times can leave us going, okay, when do we see this student? And then we have this like tension of families going, why aren't you seeing our student? And kind of just trying to figure out like what are some creative ways that we can still include students that are maybe receiving multiple services, you know, whether it's through like experiential learning or, you know, coming to family nights, but also like, it's very real that, you know, the kids in the elementary are, their days are very tight. And so we've worked a lot with the principals on like when to find time, but it's still hard to find time for some kids. And I think that's, attention we're gonna continue to see as we're moving forward.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I just want to say really quick that my son's in sixth grade, so he's in band, he's not in choir, but he also has reading intervention. So he has, there, I don't, there's no, I don't know where to find the time for the Indian culture program, so like he won't get that. He got that, and who has it? So he loved every minute of it. He loved the connection, he loved learning, and at this point, at sixth grade, he's okay.
And so that's a gap that we're looking at to try to address. Being, since we are building up this culture in the early years, starting in pre-K, all the way up, and then we have this linkage that's breaking in sixth grade, and then again from eighth and ninth, so from eighth to ninth, we're losing probably about more than half of our students will not utilize Indian at the high school level.
Do we have, oh, I'm sorry. Do we have the ability with, with our grava to integrate any of it? Cause it sounds like we've developed a program that's pretty unique here, at least. Is there any way we can leverage that into grava at all?
I don't know, that's something we haven't talked about.
Do we have the ability to enhance that outside? Spread that culture out to outside of our district.
And so just last week, we had our Wild Rice Exhibition, and normally we, it's like a free-for-all for teachers to sign up first, and like, no joke, I get emails and text messages like weeks before saying, hey, when are you releasing the schedule? When is this gonna go out? Because you need to like shoot me a text. So, I mean, they're right on it. So this year, we, we really switched up how to do that. So we seen all of the fifth graders in ISD three-eighteen, and then we saw all of our program students. So we opened it up to, to those groups over a three-day period, yeah, because we can't, over a three-day period. And so they gotta come in and see, do taste, all of that. And same with like Sugar Bush coming up. And let me say, you guys have some awesome staff, Hermals from Deer River, and was my kiddo's teacher in Deer River. So me and him have this trading barter thing going on, so we'll be smoking fish out there in the next couple of weeks because he's getting us fish. And so just opportunities like that, where we'll get a pull-in, just extra classes or things on the side like that, that all kids can learn from.
Well, I think it was cool, like, we really, we picked the fifth grade because the Reading Burchmark House, um, for their, like, unit. And so just like, they're learning about racing, and like in the next week, they're gonna like read about it, you know, as part of that. And so for the second grade, they also have the, the American West unit, and so have, um, some native content. Some of the teachers have reached out, just like, okay, how can we do Sugar Bush, but also do more? And like, they're really excited about that partnership, and so it's exciting to see kind of what, what will happen. Just thinking about that our students not only will get to come like with their, with their program peers, but also they get to come with their classmates, and so that's really cool too, to know like, hey, my classmates knows what's going on here. Uh, just to bounce back, Erica, do you want to talk about the middle school?
Yes, um, so the middle school, so, um, kids keep me running. I have kids from the moment I step foot inside the building to after four. Sometimes I don't get out there till close to five, um, just with the extra help. But, um, I have kids, um, all throughout the whole entire hours. And, um, I really focus on, um, academics, to try to close that achievement gap to really get them, to make sure, I check on missing assignments, current assignments, grades, I see all the testing. And these are the kids that I'm only allowed to pull kids out of study halls. So a lot of our program students, I don't get to see because there's, there isn't that time to put in place, um, for them to come into my room. Um, but I still try to do, um, I number, I, it, it fluctuates. I think I was at like, uh, close to a hundred, a hundred students, a hundred and six, I think, last time I checked for the middle school. So, um, and I really tried to do, um, look at like missing the grades, um, and then I really tried to teach them to on how to be vocal and reach out to the teachers and have that open communication to like, if they have missing assignments, well, what can we do? And I tried to push them to make that initiative, to talk to that teacher, and then they will come back with me with what, um, what they plan to say and what they, the result. Um, and then we do, um, so I monitor that, really, every Tuesday I get on them for their missing assignments. And then, um, Thursdays, we do a little bit of, um, culture. So it's anywhere from, um, that's when, really when I incorporate some of the language, um, we do a lot of like commands. Um, and then we do like counting, so, um, most of them can count up, um, over twenty. Um, they know the colors, um, pretty much. And I don't look at, I don't do it as a like sit-down-and-learn, here's a piece of paper approach. We do, um, I really make it like a hands-on, fun, fun thing to do, so it really sticks in with them. And then, um, I try to open it up to, well, I do open it up to, um, all non, non-Native students also. So they get that exposure too on the native culture. And then we also do, um, bigger projects, um, at. So they get that exposure to on the native culture and then we also do um bigger projects um at the middle school. So I do, I teach a lot of um like the cultural aspect, the eating, the birch bark. The wood carving, um what else? We do dream catchers, um I have a kiddo working on um Ojibwe snowshoes right now. What else?
So far in the month of November, we also do a. We work with Granditas a clinic and hospital for Native American Heritage Month, so for the month of November. In the display cases in the clinic, you'll notice ninety percent of that is middle school work. And so we're actually gonna go there tomorrow and fill them up, but that's all the work from her students showcase. And those four.
And then with each project, there um, there's that story, that culture behind on why they made it and why they picked that. Since it's all through done storytelling.
At, at any one point, how many students can you maybe have in that, that you're working with like? In your room? Yeah, I guess, you know, you talked about a hundred and six and it kind of varies, so it's like.
I think there was one time I squeezed thirty. Thirty some kids in my little tiny classroom, it was hot. But yeah, and then um I also take on the approach of instead of me doing. Teaching each kid individually, I really have the students pick up that aspect on how. They can help me teach other students, so they really get that and. Our big thing that we're gonna be working on, come and sing this rock your mops. So that's um we do a week long thing, um second week.
Next weekend, right?
Next week and so we really um, so instead of like just coloring sheets. We take apart um brown paper bags and I soak them and then I have them help me glue them together. And then we actually make um like sturdy paper moccasins that I have um like I'll put up, display in the hallway. And I make like little path, so and then we also have the um meek witch tree, so I will go at, in lunchrooms um during lunch hours and. Cut out a leaf and then they put what, what they're thankful for and then, so we usually have this great big huge like fall looking tree.
And the middle school is taking great strides in welcoming culture and welcoming belonging. Me and Mr. Debate currently wrote an endowment grant to bring in some food aspects for the full school. So we're gonna look at some different kind of culture through food, who doesn't like that? But our middle school students, everyone participates when we do cultural activities like this, which is nice to see.
I think uh two things I just wanna know, I think uh the space, yeah, we need a bigger space, that's for sure at the middle school. I know space is a premium everywhere and like for a lot of the projects that Erica is working on with students, like you actually need space. If you're gonna sew, like you can't just like have a desk, right? And so I think that's something that we've, we've been in conversation about with the middle school, but you know with people shifting rooms and doing things sometimes, you know. Definitely something just to keep on the radar continually so that we can find some space. And also Erica's kind of shifted her schedule, so on Mondays she can meet more individually with students that have that need, which is really cool. Some students need that more individual approach and I think that's really great. Um high school, um similar to the middle school, uh students coming in either during study halls or recharge time. Recharge, you know, either for that twenty minutes or a study hall. It's about ninety-four students at high school. Doing very similar things kind of across the board, there's a culture lesson once a week, academic focus, just making sure that kids are on track for. For graduation, of course, the credit piece kind of comes at the high school level and so just making sure kids are working on that. Doing some differently, post-secondary field trips, having different, you know, speakers coming in from colleges. And also we have a, a, an elective credit class for students where they could um work on a project. And by doing different um. Activities and cross-generational learning, they can earn a half of an elective credit. And so this semester we have six high school students and three ALC students. So definitely um lots going on there as well. Big Fork, I'm just kinda, Kaylee's been up there, just, she's been great, just kinda running around. Trying to make relationships and figure out how does their schedule work and where can, you know, she meet with kids, you know, I mean it's very different going from a. One grade level or like a grade band classroom to K twelve, like kind of meeting the needs of everyone and. So uh she's just really jumped in and just we're excited that we can make sure that Big Fork has the same experiences as our students around our schools. So stay tuned on more information about Big Fork as we continue.
This is the first year.
Yeah, well, it used to be like they, like someone would go up like intermittently, so like some people would be assigned for a couple of days or kind of here and there, but not someone like. Specifically designated like as their position.
And she really jumped into this role, um she was, um, or she took over the um East Elementary. While our other advocate was out on maternity leave and so she's really um bringing a lot of the um. She has some really good ideas and um she incorporating the language and how she. Just migrates that to from K through twelve, she's, she's really, she's doing awesome up there, making strides.
Um again, the cultural learning area, I just put these, these beautiful pictures of a beautiful day, unfortunately it was really cold for everyone the last couple of weeks, but. Kind of like next steps with that. We need water at the cultural site and so uh Darren Churney has been, he's getting some quotes and estimates from public utilities. And like figuring out like how much it would cost so we could look, see if there's any grants available somewhere or like try to find some funding so that we can have water. I mean so much, so many of the activities that we have at the cultural site, like water is really needed, you know, for those things. So that's hopefully something by next year we could have a, have a concrete plan for. Focusing on our strategic, strategic directions. Also this year, uh advocates and their principals are setting a joint goal for their building to increase cultural knowledge and awareness. Something just really like positive in a way to kind of expand, um even, you know, the principal's knowledge of what's going on in the program. And kind of like continuing that partnership, so we're excited to see what that looks like. And then just continuing to support the, the parent committee and helping them. Help us, I guess you could say. Anything else? I'm gonna add on this. I don't know if Anna, again, if you wanna say anything else about your experience as a parent, or if there's anything you wanna share? You have a parent comment?
I kinda already did about, you know, like if there's a little bit of a gap there when, you know, when my son came from fifth grade to sixth grade. He's, you know, he was making fried bread in cohasse, he was learning the language, he was learning. Grandfather teaching, it's gonna, now it's gonna. It's gonna be a gap, it'll be a gap.
One thing that I, and I've never had a sixth grader at the middle school, well, I did for like a month because I fostered, but. I, when I was at the sixth grade band concert last year, I noticed they said. They thanked the sixth grade teachers for letting the kids out for band lessons once a week. And so I'm curious why they can't go to Indian Ed for a lesson once a week. So I don't know who, like, how we look into that, but um it just seems like if they can. Miss something for a band lesson, they should be able to miss something for a cultural lesson.
As you can see, it's really important. Development report, getting to know the families, you just don't wanna just end it.
And I feel like some kids probably drop off after they have that gap.
And in high school too, it was important too. Actually, it's, gets, gets tougher in high school, if you have any difficulties with reading or writing or school or. Social or, you know, good to have that connection with somebody, like you said.
And I know at the high school they can, like my daughter would get a pass from her history teacher to go work. In the Ojibwe ed room on an assignment or something and I don't know, anything like that can be done at the middle school, or I mean. In sixth grade though, that's just what I'm thinking, cause I focused on the kids that are missing out, but.
The band lesson, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a good.
It's bugged me for a while, but when I was at the band concert, I was like, wait a second. Why is that okay?
Cause I kinda had some other like ideas and stuff, cause I know we've chatted about this multiple times. And like how students are both in band and choir and so they alternate those days. So how can we get those students and can they continue to alternate those days in order to come and get that cultural lesson for me? And then again, we run into the space of no space.
I think one thing too, Erica had a great idea of exploring, like could we use that religious release time for some of the sixth grade to try to like loop them in for a longer chunk here or there? I know there's some definite parameters to that, but you know, could we get creative with, with some time if we couldn't figure out another avenue?
Cause that's what every, every other week or and then they get to miss the sneak around.
Enough time where we could, we could.
Sure, dude, I appreciate the report, I understand that you still have uh ways to go and I appreciate that. I use this information, you have such a successful program. And in statewide meetings, I frequently uh reference the work that you all have been doing and uh. Uh you should be very proud uh of what you've accomplished, I know you're still working on it, but thank you for the work you've done so far.
I have a quick question, so I think I asked this last year at the. At the state um school board association training um we went to. At the federal level, the state level, district level, school level, there are many different names of what the programs are called. Between Indian Ed, Ojibwe Ed, Indian Education, you know, all the different things, right? And so culturally, I just would like to ask you, what would you like us to call? You know what I mean, like there's so many levels and there's so many, so and I know that every level has different, you know, historical context, but. For Grand Rapids, what would you refer to call?
It is like the Inishnabe Yikino Amatouin program for thirteen, but I think like.
If you could just say Inishnabe.
Right, I, I mean, I think that's. I have no idea, that's why I'm asking the question, I mean.
To me, it means the first people like.
Does Inishnabe mean the first people in Ojibwe? Is that, am I saying that right?
Original.
I just think it'd be important that we get consistent.
And some of us, I'm not consistent about what I say either, just cause it used to be referred to as Indian Ed and so I sometimes just. Will say that too.
So like the legal statutes, it is Indian Ed, right, and the grants and so, I think sometimes interchangeable, but. But like at the middle school, I have my Ojibwe education.
Yeah, right. So we're kind of clear across, like we're across the board too. And I'm sitting in all these other meetings and it's Indian education to me, but coming back and. Because I mean in our area here, we have, we have Ojibwe, we have Sioux, we have Potawatomi, I mean, we have a huge mixture. So to make the question, the answer clear?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, learning how to say Inishnabe, you know, Amatouin is great. And if you reference that as Ojibwe Ed, great, and if you call it Indian Ed, no one's gonna be mad. You know, and I think.
Be a good way to say it, yeah. Yeah, but I think, I mean, my experience has been like the effort that I put into learning. Is appreciated even if I don't say it perfect. There's, there's like an acknowledgement of, you know, that guy's trying at least. Thank you, I appreciate that. Stand in front of the mirror, making a model in.
Matt's gonna make your recording and send it out.
Well, so funny story about that, it's not, there's probably, it's probably in video somewhere. Sherwin, who I worked with in Deer River, he recorded me, I can't remember why he did this to me. But he recorded, he wanted to get a recording of me saying all kind, like a three sentences. And the number of times he had to like keep repeating it over and over again was just brutal and I think I still messed it up really bad. So I hope that video isn't out there anywhere. Jessica, don't you go.
So to give you guys some background and some history too on our program, I mean, so me and Erica sit on the Minnesota Indian Education Association Board. We're actually enrolled members of the Fond du Lac reservation, so we're really close with their RBC and they have these amazing programming that out there. Like our chairperson runs this massive farm and does all this traditional stuff out there, so we get opportunities to bring our students there. Like when we want, whatever we wanna get done, I'm like, they're doing everything from. Taking care of animals from the very beginning to the very end, to doing this kind of stuff. We also sit, in being on the Minnesota Indian Education Association Board, we also have these amazing people who sit on the board throughout Minnesota. We have our Dakota Lakota teachings, we gotta go spend some time this summer down there in Shakopee and learning new things that. That really are the exact opposite of how we grew up and learned. We also get, so the tribal, the tribal nation's education committee is TNEC and they're. In the Indian education world, there are higher ups. I got asked by TNEC to go to a training last week to go in and observe and basically train the trainer. And give them advice how to change up some of the new things that they're doing. So last week I got the, some extreme learning at a state and federal level. From our TNEC members and just getting different insights from around Minnesota through those members, cause they're in complete different board. They're an appointed board from the tribal governments. So just being on these different areas within Minnesota and seeing our program progress. Seeing that other people want things from our programming. And then we also sit on a Native American leadership team for the Northam Foundation, this is. That we didn't happen doing this. My third year out there and so we're looking at restructuring the. Indian education. Programming in the seven counties in northern Minnesota and how that will look through for the state and federal levels. So we work close with state. And with our tribal relations director and with our Minnesota Indian Education Department. All of them to really figure out how we want this restructure to happen. So our feelers are everywhere and when you talk about the Indian education program in Minnesota, Grand Rapids is actually one of the top Indian education program. So now it's time to step up our game. And add more language in, add more of our culture and, and being in the community we're in. And these relationships we have within the community is very embracing, so for Native American Heritage Month, this month. We are working with Fire in the Village with, which is Annie Humphrey's nonprofit that's in town, across the art gallery, the children's museum, Grand Itasca. I have a nonprofit in Deer River called Auntie's House and then we're working with Minnesota North and they're hosting. A lunch and learn and performers. So we have all kinds of things that'll be available to our students, our staff, our whole community for the entire month. So we have all kinds of things that'll be available to our students, our staff, our whole community for the entire month.
Any more comments or questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming to agree presentation. What a great job you guys do too. Next item on the agenda. Kara, student data indicator report.
Good evening. What's coming around is our current enrollment.
Kara, what do we see about Fontz?
I'm sorry. So.
I was prepared tonight.
Good, good. Each week, Linda Larson, who is our um student information service coordinator. She handles the enrollments, um she, along with the secretaries, the administrative assistants in the building. And they get put into Infinite Campus and each week she sends an update on Friday of what our enrollment is. And when I tell you that our enrollment changes every single day, um that is, that is absolute truth. Every day, our enrollment changes. Whether it be a student going from R G M S to Grava or from. West to Outed District or um Big Fork to High School. Um our, our enrollment changes every day. So this is as of um Friday. This is butts in seats, this is students that we have enrolled in our school, in our district. This includes Grava, Grava on Friday, we had fifty-nine kids enrolled in Grava. I can tell you one drop today, so this number, this is already, you know, not correct um as of today. But this is where we are as of last Friday.
Are we exit interviewing anyone that needs Grava right now?
Yeah, our, our um. Sort of first quarter, if you will, satisfaction survey has gone out to high school and elementary. Uh checked for parents and kids, so we should have some data that not specific because they're dropping.
Yeah, just be a standard, how are things going?
So this enrollment indicator report, jump in with any questions at any time that you have. Um this is prepared with assistance from Linda Larson. Um she does a great job with our student enrollment, um she's very knowledgeable um when it comes to all things enrollment. Christina Landris is our teaching and learning admin assistant and she um is also our homeschool liaison. So from the middle of August to September fifteenth, she is bombarded with homeschool purchases, which you'll see coming up. But she does a fantastic job. Sandy is the admin assistant up in Big Fork, so she provides the Big Fork data and Christine Grover is at the high school. This year kindergarten, we currently have two hundred and four kids enrolled in kindergarten. This is our lowest kindergarten class in quite a while, actually I couldn't find one this low, looking back in our history. Um we based our budget on two hundred and thirty-two kids in kindergarten. And the disappointing um thing is uh probably in March, even earlier than that. January, when we started building the budget, we had over three hundred potential kindergarteners that could attend Grand Rapids. And right now we're sitting at two hundred and four.
So we're, we're a third, right? Is that what I heard? Oh. Three hundred, we got two hundred.
Yeah.
Third.
Yep. This is our October enrollment and this number is very important because this is a number that a lot of our aides are based on. It's the October first enrollment. Um again, this is kids in seats. Um this is not weighted for anything. If a kid is here on October first, that count is one. Regardless of if they're in high school or if they're in V P K or E C S E, early childhood special ed. Right now, our October enrollment is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. This number will likely not change unless there are errors in the system. And what that would be is if a kid transferred on the first in or out, we may have a disagreement in the system with another school, which will get resolved. But you can see how this breaks out between um the, the secondary and the primary grades. This is three years of our kids' enrollment. You can see it twenty-five, twenty-six, um not really the highest in any of the grades. It's kinda interesting to see how they progress throughout the years. Um interestingly, our early childhood, this is our early childhood special ed, so these are kids four and under. Who are receiving special ed services. And this is the highest of the three years. Um and V P K is also the highest of the three years and what happened um. Two years ago, the state awarded Grand Rapids fifty-eight seats in voluntary pre-K at West. And prior to that, the only V P K, V P K seats we had were in Big Fork, we had thirteen seats. Even though um Early Edge, Invest Early was offering V P K, we were educating the kids. We weren't getting the aid from the state for those. So now our kids are classified as voluntary pre-K, we are, we are full. So we're getting the aid for those kids. This is our October count again, um and again, this is extremely important. Because the other thing about our October first count is we look at our free and reduced students and what that does is it helps. Determine some of our aides and the biggest of those is our compensatory aid. Compensatory aid, the last two years has been right around four million dollars and that's based on um the rate of our free and reduced kids for our total population. Two years ago, our percentage was forty-eight percent. This year, as of Friday, our percentage was thirty-eight percent. How this is determined is students are either directly certified, so their family is receiving some sort of benefit like Medicaid or SNAP. Food stamps, um or um the kids fill out what's called the educational benefit form. They turn it in, the parents self-certify that this is my income, this is where my kids fall. We need to collect more of those forms to get an accurate um picture of our enrollment and maybe our enrollment has dropped this percentage. In free reduced classifications, but um. I don't know that that is the truth. We, our compensatory aid is based on this in this calculation. Also, our E-rate funding is also based on this, this calculation. These are our elementary sections and our elementary grade sizes for the past five years. This year, the fifth grade, um which has, has been big all the way through. Um has an average class size of twenty-nine point one. I know we can't have point one kids, but for math purposes, this is how it plays out. We have sixty sections right now across Cohasset, East, West and Big Fork. Um which is the lowest we have had in the past five years. We're down two sections from last year and if you remember when we were budgeting, we had budgeted um only a reduction in one, but then our kindergarten class, we saw. Those students um being signed up elsewhere, going to non-public, um being held back. Um so we reduced another kindergarten section.
We did that, didn't we Kara do that? We reduced that kindergarten section after the budget was adopted.
Yeah.
So we did, I don't know Kara said we budgeted for two thirty. We did adjust, make an adjustment that we could make in the summer by eliminating the K section. We had the opportunity to help offset the fact that we were gonna be overestimated.
These are the grade levels of our Grava kids, um not as many in the kindergarten, in the elementary classes, um more in the secondary classes. As of October twenty-second, we had fifty-eight kids enrolled in Grava. Last year at the high school, um we started at October first with eleven hundred and sixteen students. A hundred and eighteen of those withdrew from the high school. We had a hundred and twenty-seven move in after October first. We graduated two hundred and fifty-one and we ended with a thousand forty-five. And at the bottom, you can see why the students left. Um and the majority of the kids in grades eleven and twelve, that other um is likely students going to our A L C. So we kept them within the district, they were able to still take classes here, they just weren't taking them at the high school. This is Big Fork, nine through twelve, um at October first, they had seventy-two kids enrolled, um four withdrew. Two were added, um we graduated twenty-one kids in Big Fork. This is our district with our crazy um boundaries, we um. We neighbor eleven distri- eleven districts, so that leads to a lot of open enrollment. This is our open enrollment for the past ten years. This past year, twenty-four, twenty-five, um we had the lowest net gain of any of the years shown, we had a hundred and one net gain. In twenty-three, twenty-four, our net gain was a hundred and sixty-four students. In fiscal year nineteen twenty, we had a net gain of two hundred and seventeen and nineteen twenty was the year COVID started. And what also started. When COVID happened was a lot of online schools. So since then, we have been losing students to online schools and that is why our gain has been decreasing. It's very easy for students to live in our district and take classes elsewhere online. The bottom, the green, are charter schools and we have one charter school located within our district and that's in Warva, Northern Lakes. And then the rest of those charter schools are online schools. In the other districts, we also have kids taking online classes there and then the tuition out are students that are put in care and treatment. So we keep those kids on our rolls, but we pay for that, we get a bill from the district, just like our kids at I E C. Most of them are not on our rolls, um but we bill the resident districts for their care and treatment costs. This doesn't include any kids that leave to go to um our non-public schools or home school. These are the top five schools that we lose students to and that we gain students from. So um Greenway, for Greenway, we, we gained almost five hundred students last year and we lost two hundred and seven. So we netted two hundred and ninety-two of Greenway's um students. Deer River, we can, we netted seventeen and Hill City, we lost nineteen students overall to Hill City. But you can see the top five, Minnesota Transitions is a charter school, online, that we lose seventy-six students. This year, we have five hundred and sixty-seven resident students who are attending non-public schools or being homeschooled. You can see how they have changed over the years at the bottom, the past three years. Um Lighthouse Academy started during COVID. And has more than doubled in the past two years. Lakes Academy started in fiscal year twenty-three and this year they enrolled all of their secondary students in our Grava. So um all the kids in secondary are now enrolled in Grand Rapids through our online program.
Do, how, how many of the, how many of that?
I don't. With the homeschool and why Christina is so busy is um the state has a program. And it was something that was up for discussion this year in the legislature. Homeschool families, homeschool children are allowed these different allowances, these different rates. So if you homeschool your children or if your children go to a non-public school. You can get a hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for supplies, for educational supplies and there's a list of allowable items. We had three hundred and ninety-five students. Who need to place orders through three eighteen or submit their receipts and then three eighteen will reimburse those families.
So when we look at that number, that really doesn't account for admin costs.
No, it's not.
It's, it's just straight cost of that.
Yep.
Really doesn't count.
Yep, yep, and they have, families have until September fifteenth to submit their, their data for us to get reimbursed for it. The health services, um we provide um a nurse one day a week at Saint Joe's. And Saint Joe's is the only um school right now that takes advantage of this health service um allowance. So we, three eighteen gets the money, we pay for the nurse, the nurse goes over to Saint Joe's one day a week. There's also a secondary guidance service, but no one takes advantage of that. That's all I have right now. Do you have any questions?
Very well done, thank you. Kindergarten numbers are a little concerning. And first grade?
I uh was on call today with the state demographer and um. She had a graph, she had a graph of statewide seventeen-year-olds down to. Like one-year-olds that look like this, male and female, like it was. There's way less little kids and she said for the first time in the history of our state, she's aware of or can access data. There are more people sixty-five and older than school age kids. So. Our state has a fertility rate of one point seven kids per family, two point one is maintaining. Um she said in our whole country, actually there's not a state that's got two point. So it's just an incredible trend and actually not just in uh America, it's in most countries. That we're used to hearing about population, they're kind of experiencing the same thing, so it's a. It's a, it's a trend and, you know. Think when you look at. The number of sections we had. During COVID, you know, we had, we were running five sections of each, no, we're running ten sections of each grade level. Just at East and West, so we were running twelve, thirteen sections, uh no more than that. Ten and then two, well thirteen sections, yeah. Across the board, now we're down ten. Um so fifteen, fifteen sections we've cut, sixteen sections. To try to stay right-sized. As much as we can, but. We're gonna need to continue to do it and you know, part of the. When we eliminated that K section, it was another example of why going to our grade level buildings was really important. We wouldn't have been able to cut a section this summer if we weren't in grade level buildings. Well, we could have, but we would have had to tell families in the middle of summer, oh yeah, Suzie's going to East though instead of West or it would have been.
Had a big class size or whatever.
Yeah, it would have been. So structurally that way, we're, we're in a better spot than we were before, but. there's still some challenges ahead. I think part of what, you know, we're seeing too, and I, I, you know, we've talked about this with online, it's a thing. We've demonstrated that there's a need. And part of what I think we need to do is lean into that. Our homeschool number is down this year. I think that's part of, Grava's part of that. There's still seventy-some kids at Minnesota Transitions. And so that's the one, we don't have a lot of levers to move. That's one of the levers that we can move. And I think we need to lean into that. And, you know, I think if we're gonna do that, we're gonna need to look at how we're staffed administratively. Have some, somebody who's getting up every day thinking about online learning, if we're gonna really do that. So you can expect to see that recommendation from me at some point.
For the kids that are going to Minnesota Transitions, we must have their information, who they are. Have we already reached out to them to share the fact that, hey, have you looked at Grava?
Yeah, I know that Andy made, made personal phone calls this, this last summer. And I think that's something that we can kind of circle back to. Part of what I think these surveys will be helpful with is we didn't advertise really hard. But I also know that in looking through materials from other districts that have been down this road, they're, they're publishing information when they get data about how things are going. So if we are successful, I think it creates an opportunity to publicize the program and maybe draw in some of those folks that have gotten comfortable with what they're doing and maybe waiting to see how it will go.
Kara, I can't help but ask this question, but do you have any sort of predictions in terms of how this is going to end with budgeting next year? I mean, to Tom's point, if we have less, third, less kindergarten
We, we purchase the, the birth records every quarter from my task account. So we know kids that are born in this county that would attend our school. So we track kids from the minute they're born. We, what we don't know is if they move out or families that move in. So that's part of the three hundred, we thought three hundred back in January. We can't keep families from going to our non-publics.
Okay, okay, so that three hundred is based on birth records six years ago.
Birth records, and yep, what we know, if a family moves in and they, they bring a little, we know about that little, and we, we recognize that kid in our system.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we could have lost fifty of them just because their parents lost a job and they were not, right? And they would know that stat. We would, we'd lose that information.
We'd lose it if they have a Yep, if they don't have a kid that's older that's already in school.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It also includes all kids that are kindergarten-eligible, not necessarily not all those parents are gonna send their kindergarten that year.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, it's just based on age, bottom line, right?
Based on their born date. But it was, I mean, I would say, as much as all those factors, I, I would say that I don't know that I remember seeing that big of a difference between the number of kids that we could see and the number that we ended up seeing. You know, we always have a number that's bigger than, than we end up seeing, but not sixty-five percent of what we saw in January. We've seen that big change.
You know, we see, you back to the comment, changes every week, right? That just blew my mind away when I think about that. So are, are these, is there a, is there a real low percentage that's just bouncing back and forth and all over? I mean, can we see one student that might be in and out three times in a year, or is it more, or you call? So, so when we see those bouncing numbers, it's really maybe five percent of the student population, they're just bouncing all over and kind of getting lost in the system for lack of better term.
Those kids that leave, come back, leave, come back, those are definitely the exception. We don't have a lot of those, you know, it's the families that are moving that are the hardest. They'll have multiple kids.
And, you know, that, that at the end of the day, this is one of the things that makes this really hard to budget, makes the job really hard, right? We don't know the, the two biggest factors, and I've said this before a million times. The two biggest factors affecting our, our revenue are how many kids we have in the state's, you know, the state consists per kid. We enter every other year not knowing one, really almost every year not knowing one, what the state's doing, and for sure, every single year not knowing the other one. So two biggest factors, that's two of our biggest unknowns.
And we're paid on the average. So Lynda's giving us every week, you know, what kids in seats, right? So when January comes, I ask her to start giving me the average. Give me the average, because that's what we're paid on. So if a kid is here the entire year, they're one. If they're here half a year, they're a point five. So, you know, the, the change becomes a lot smaller the further they into the year.
Silvering numbers. Any further comments or questions? Is there any other business to come before the board? Kara, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks Kara.
Are there any other states that is better to do this in terms of funding?
I mean, I'd be willing to bet there are, I couldn't tell you.
I just wonder if there's other mechanisms besides average student attendance.
Well, certainly some states have an easier formula to fill.
Yeah.
I think our, Kara, how long's, what's ours like forty-two pages or something like that?